Welcome to the April 9, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invocation offered by Commissioner Coons, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we come to you humbly today, giving you thanks for everything that you continue to do in our lives, but more importantly, giving you thanks for what's more important than anything else, and that is the gift of life. We pray that you continue to bless us, continue to give us strength, resolve, wisdom, in handling the challenges that our city might face now and into the future. We continue to do your will and walk in your light and put all differences aside, all partisanship, to do what's best for the citizens of Sandusky. All these things we ask for you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Commissioners, before the minutes of our meeting of March the 25th, 2024, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the March 25 meeting as presented.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name and address and your agenda comments. That was easy.
Not everybody wants.
Commissioners, before you, several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation, can I have a motion to accept these communications?
移到
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor license for Dockside Hospitality LLC. Item B, consent for land bank purchase and sale agreement for two parcels on West Market Street. Item C, approval of easements for Sandusky Bay Pathway with U.S. Subaki. Item D, approval of easements for Sandusky Bay Pathway with West Side Sports Center. Item E, amending Resolution 009-24R, accepting bids for local street resurfacing project. Item F, approval of change order and final for 2022 Big Island Water Works project with all phase. Item G, approval of submerged land lease for 427 Cedar Point Road.
Commissioners, having heard these liquor licenses, ordinances, and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items A through G and declaring that all ordinances or resolutions are, as presented, shall take effect in accordance with Sections 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. I'd like to just note, and I had no intention of removing this or moving this to the regular agenda, but I'd like to acknowledge that Item C is on the consent agenda, not to minimize that or make it anything other than it is, but it is, I know all of you realize that this is another piece of the puzzle in our move to complete the pathway. And U.S. Subaki, we got an appraisal on this property, and it seems, if my memory serves me, it was $18,000 or $20,000. U.S. Subaki has chosen to look the other way on that and make a donation of that amount to the city. I'd like to acknowledge them for, you know, for that kind gesture. One more piece to the puzzle in putting the pathway together. Been a long road, but I think we're getting there. Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the liquor license, ordinances, and resolutions.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Those liquor license, ordinances, and resolutions are all passed. Turn to our regular agenda, and Ms. Myers, will you present item number one, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed repealing Resolution Number 00824R and declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Sandusky Wills Park project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I move for the adoption of this resolution pursuant to Section 13 of the city's charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair. I do have a question about, and I don't know, I'm sure it's probably too far down the road, but was there ever any discussion about this being bid to go in over where the rec center will be?
I would look to, perhaps, Ms. Blair? Site selection, that's the question regarding site selection.
I didn't, I'm sure it's added cost, I would imagine, probably because we have some of the structure already there, right? The skate park's there, but I don't know what, I haven't looked at, I guess, close enough to know everything that's going into building this $800,000-some thousand. So I was just curious, thinking it's close to the high school, it's close to the intermediate school, it'd be great, once we build the rec center, if that had access for the kids there.
To the President, to Commissioner Fargo, we conducted about a six to nine month community engagement process on the skate park, just to ask questions about what is working well, what's not working well, and learning from other places. The intention was, from the beginning, to have a destination park, and downtown was always in the site selection that we were looking at, so we did evaluate keeping it where it is, and we evaluated moving it to Sandusky Bay Pavilion instead, so it would still be close to the water, and everybody seemed to be really pleased with where it is right now. I think there's some good, there's an advantage for the police department to be right there, too, so no matter what kind of activity people are participating in, we have that visibility on the site, and as well as access to interior, water, and things like that. We had not looked at any other sites outside the city, just because the intention was to make it a destination. What I did learn, and I didn't know at the beginning of this process, is how often families and people travel to go to these types of facilities, and we do expect it to be part of our tourism and visitation draw as well, and not just serving our local youth. It's really a multi-generational space, and it's one of the most highly-used parks that we have, and it seems to be working really well in that location, so that's kind of where we landed with it.
Okay, but all that was done before we knew we were having the rec center, right? You guys did all of your studies about that, just out of curiosity, was that?
Yes, that was before the rec center community engagement really started to pick up.
Okay. We've had, and I think this might be a question for Mr. Klein, perhaps, just from an engineering perspective, I know this isn't necessarily your project, but from an engineering perspective, we have the engineering in place for this project to go in a specific location. We've had some trouble getting bids that fit our budget. Would we or would we not have to re-engineer the project to fit in another location, or is it just pick it up and go, if that was the mindset? I don't mean to give you a hard ball, I thought, I was thinking that was an easy answer, but it doesn't look like it.
Well, I'm trying to think through the geotechnical and the site drainage and all of those various things to make sure that, there are some bowls, some lower-lying areas within the features that are out there, so we'd have to make sure that we did put in those catch basins and put in the pipes, and some of that infrastructure is already on this site. We also know that the location that it's going to stay at, or that it's intended to stay at, already has quite a bit of base that's good material, that if you are going to build something out of concrete, and you're going to have that construction equipment driving over it, so putting it somewhere else, I would think that you could possibly take this type of layout and put it somewhere else, but there'd be a lot more foundational work and upfront work that would need to be done to make sure that the site is suitable for that location.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. And Aaron, you brought up an interesting point that I had not thought of, and that is that perhaps the people using this site are not necessarily residents of Sandusky, but that are traveling to Sandusky, and perhaps they're traveling with families, guess we kind of like them to use amenities, amenities associated with the location that they're at, which is not to exclude, certainly not meant to exclude, the possibility of that landing on our, you know, on our rec center site. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I may have misheard, and I apologize. I thought I might have heard Mr. Murray say under Section 13 of the charter.
I mumbled, I meant 14.
That was a mumble, that was not really 13, that was 14.
It should have been 14, I said 13. What remedial steps do you require?
Just, clarification is good, if you meant 14.
Yes, thank you.
Got it, okay. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've pondered that, too, why that skateboard park wasn't at least considered out there. I mean, it seems to me you'd want all your recreation to be in one place, it would make that more attractive, and we'd have speculated where there would be some memberships coming. I think the study said $400,000 in membership was kind of the speculation from outside, it might make it more attractive to those people who want a membership there. I realize there's probably some challenges to doing something like that, but, and last but not least, there's probably a better use for that, that space behind the police station. Maroos might want that, I don't know. But those are just my thoughts. It may be too difficult to do at this stage of the game. I think I said something, Mr. Whoops, early on, and he said, well, the stakeholders wanted it to stay there, so we were going to follow the lead of the stakeholders.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the second change order for work to be performed by Moser Construction Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, for the Sandusky Justice Center project in the amount of $278,143.43, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Murray?
Could we, just because it is a big change order, could we get some information on?
We can in the discussion.
Okay, I thought that's what we were doing. Oh, I forgot, we're going to take a, I'm sorry.
We need a motion, we need a motion to get to the discussion phase.
Yes, I'm in a hurry.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I'll make the motion under the right section this time, for the adoption of ordinance, the second ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second discussion.
There we go.
Ms. Fargo?
If we could just share with our community the change order process and why it's so much.
Mr. Klein, I know there's, like, I think there's four different parts to that, if you'd just kind of give us an overview of where we're spending that money.
Yeah, absolutely, and through the commission president, I do have four sections outlined in the communication, and I'll try to just be very brief on each one, but be specific on to why these things occur. On any renovation-type project, it's obvious that you're going to get into stuff when you start the demolition. On the Phase 1, we found that there were some structural issues and some concrete masonry with the block issues out there as well. We did not, we weren't anticipating anything on the second phase, but we ran into even worse situation out there. The second section on here details that. There was an area that the plans that we had showed that there were some structural members directly above the grade beams. It turns out those structural members were nonexistent whatsoever, and it was just block walls, and then some non-structural glass block walls that were acting as structural walls. The construction crew and the architects were very surprised that we didn't have more damage to the building. So not only were there not structural members on the first floor, holding up the second floor, but the second floor, one of the walls was offset from the other wall, so it was acting as kind of a, we call it a moment, it's acting kind of like a cantilevered edge pulling down on that, and that's where a lot of cracks were happening, and we had water damage in a walkway that was connecting the old police portion and the old administrative building on the portion on the second floor. That was the majority of it, that was over $100,000 just for that fix, and that's because we had to remove two walls that were intended to stay, we had to get these new steel members in, and not only that, when we put these new members in, we needed some columns, and we needed to drill into the grade beams to make sure that it's not shifting anymore. That's the big item that's on here. We also had some IT and security modifications where we needed cameras moved, for example, in the court space, there were cameras that were in the corners, but after more discussion, it was decided that the wire needed to be run, and they needed to be directly over where the money was going, to the transactions were going to be happening, so it could be very clear and very visible. There were some controls on some of the doors for the police side that were on the wrong side of the door, they were actually on the door where the interviews were going to be happening, and the other side of the door, did I have that right? So they were on the wrong side, and we just wanted to make sure that we could contain the people during the interview process. When we opened the walls, there were obviously pipes running through the walls, through the floors. What we noticed in those situations was, instead of removing a small section, there might be large section of block completely removed. The original cost for that was in the $70,000 range to do all the infills, well, when we went through it, and the architect did a very good job of figuring out exactly what was going to cause structural issues, and what was just an aesthetic item, so we got that item down to about $20,000 for infills. And another one of those things, I was very adamant that I wanted the exterior walls, whether they were going to be a major structural issue or not, I wanted those filled in just for the temperature and the thermal, so that we weren't getting cold air into the building. And last but not least, there were two items that we had originally removed from the scope when we were a couple million dollars over budget, when we were originally designing this. There were actually multiple items that we removed, but two of them that we would like to add back in was, at the time, the water tanks that we had had life left in them. Well, now, two years later, we would like to, we've replaced those water tanks, and we've actually added some pumps as well, because we weren't getting the amount of hot water that we needed over at the police's locker room. And the last one was the curbs. We had 100 linear feet of additional curb to be done on the outside on the new parking lot, that's going to get paved, and we knew that there was a little bit more, but we didn't realize there was another 600 feet that needed to be done. Some of that is because of plowing recently, others is just that we had eliminated that, we're hoping to do that two, three, four, five years. So now with concrete prices stabilizing, we'd like to move forward with doing that additional curb, that way, when we open up the building, a lot of that curb is inside the fenced area, the secured area, where the police and courts will be parking, we'd like to get that out of the way now and just move forward with it, and that item was, oh, I don't have the exact, I do have it. That item was about $26,000 additional for the remaining curb. There are a few other items on here. When we removed the floor, we didn't realize that there was a concrete floor below the plywood floors, that, we don't know exactly what it was used for, but it was two, three inches higher than the concrete, so we had to jackhammer all that out, and now they're going to have to level it. So there are some other items that you encounter in a project like this, but we're doing our best to keep the costs to a minimum.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bajali?
Mr. Klein, this project is 60/40, right? We're picking up 60%, and the court will pick up the additional 40?
Yes.
And the change orders also?
That, yes, that is the intent, was that at the end of the project, all the construction costs and then future O and M costs, all that stuff would be split 60/40.
And then I wondered, when you talk about unanticipated items, would you expect that the Columbus Ave project may have some of those?
To answer that question a little lightly, I would expect almost every project to have some of those.
All right, thank you.
You know, Mr. Klein, nobody likes looking at quarter million dollar change orders, I know you don't either, but I think to put this into perspective, I know that you know what that percentage is, and in my world, typically, you can expect between 8% and 10% change orders on projects. I think we're still considerably below that number. I know we're not finished yet, but I am pleased that it's about 6.65% right now.
Yes, to that point, typically, we are happy, or if it's a new construction-type project, you can expect an 8% to 10%. On a reconstruct, something like this, where it's a renovation of a structure, it would most likely be in the 10% to 15% range, so obviously, it's a little more difficult to do a reconstruct like this.
Sure. Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I would just point out that, you know, Mr. Klein bakes into every project a contingency, and I don't know, I don't know if the, Mr. Klein, if the percentage varies based upon new construction versus something like this, where there's much older construction and more variables, but, you know, we saw tonight on the consent agenda, an example of where that contingency was completely unneeded, and that was $50,000 that went back to the good. And I certainly recall, over many, many years, the contingencies have been, maybe we don't use up, maybe we use up most of the contingencies, but there are an awful lot of the contingencies that come, end up coming back to the city, so, yeah, we don't know what's going to happen on any given project, and the older the construction, the more variables there are, to be certain.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fargo?
I just wanted, Mr. Klein, thank you very much for the explanation to our residents, I think that's what we were looking for, not to come after you guys for having extra expenditures. I have built things for myself and my own home before, and I do know that those things occur, and you can expect that, but I was basically just to explain to the public, so thank you very much for what you're doing.
Mr. President.
Commissioner, Crable?
Just a clarification question. Are we saying that this 278,000-plus is already in the contingent budget? The contingency portion of the original budget? Or is this new money that we're being asked to approve?
Through the commission president, I, at the onset of the project, when we were very, very concerned with already being $2 million over the budget, just in our engineer's estimate, I had asked the consultant to dramatically reduce the contingency that was available. So we went somewhere in the 4% to 5% range, and on a project like this, like I said, you want 10% to 15%, so this would be new money on top of what is in that contingency. And I'll make sure that when we have our final change order, whatever that is, a deduct or whatever that is, I'll make sure that that's clearly spelled out in there as well.
Okay. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yep.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
that they can really spray out a lot farther from the shore. So...
And that's stable enough to get out there and do that?
It is. Not going out onto it, that's kind of like quicksand. So some of them, I'm going to be interested to see how Leach Excavating plans on doing it when we get to the pre-construction meeting. I'd love to see the drone thing happen.
Yeah, interesting idea.
Maybe not.
Thank you. Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that ordinance, motion on that ordinance, please.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the twenty twenty-four Local Street Resurfacing Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance under Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Kremis Corp. Company Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the twenty twenty-four Sidewalk Repair, Replacement, and Grinding Project, Contract A, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Want.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension where it's full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Gun Launch Sheet Metal Works Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the twenty twenty-four replacement of two condensing units and installation of control units for the City of Sandusky Service Center Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for adoption of the ordinance under item seven pursuant to Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I was confused when I read the background on this. It appears that we authorized bidding this project back in twenty-three. But is that the project I'm thinking of, that we authorized bidding in twenty-three, and we're just now getting pricing and bidding it now?
Yes, Mr. President. This project has been bid a couple times already, and we finally have a bidder on this round of bidding. So it was, we did receive permission several months ago.
Okay, and failed to get bidders the first time around?
Right.
Wow, okay. Good time to be in the HVAC business, I guess.
Yeah.
Additional discussion, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number eight.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a parking lot lease agreement with Buckeye Community Twenty-two LP for the use of parking spaces at two oh two West Market Street during the construction of the Columbus Avenue Reconstruction and Street Gate Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section fourteen of the city's charter.
Second. But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would just like to, whoever's responsible for this did a good job. Another piece of the parking puzzle in place. So good job on that.
Appears they negotiated a good price also.
Yeah.
Additional comments? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Concludes our regular general attorney, our city manager, for his report.
Good evening, commissioners and audience and staff. Two donations for Parks and Rec, Vine and Olive and Pell's Lettering Shirt Shack, for their donations of gift baskets to give away at the Midtown Supper Club. And the second one to Isaac and Christina Hurst for their donation of two seeds valued at fifty-five dollars for the Midtown Supper Club. If I can get a motion to accept those two donations. So move.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection. The motion will be approved. No objection. That motion is approved. Our thanks.
Thank you. For Parks and Rec, they would like to thank Antoine Hunter, Food Director for Sandusky City Schools, for his efforts and help with Midtown Supper Club. Antoine was key in making sure they had all the food and ingredients needed to make that a success. And Nick Anderson, a senior astronomer at the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, for his eclipse presentation for the kids at spring break camp at Mills. For administration, we encourage residents to sign up for our mailing list to receive the city's monthly e-newsletter. You can sign up online at www.cityofsandusky.com/newsletter. There's a lot of great information on there that the communication director's putting out monthly. So encourage people to do that. The finance department's deadline to file twenty twenty-three municipal income tax returns is April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. All individuals and businesses can utilize the regional income tax agency's website at www.ritaohio.com to file their taxes. Public works, the city is currently seeking qualifications for the following projects: construction inspection for the landing in Sandusky Bay Pathway and evaluation of the combined sewer system. A reminder that annual spring cleanup at Oakland Cemetery Memorial Park starts on April fifteenth. Residents and patrons are asked to remove anything they wish to keep prior to this date to allow sufficient time for cleanup. New cemetery decorations can be placed starting April twenty-fourth. Contractors are expecting to begin placing asphalt for bike paths, followed by roadway on Warren and East Streets the week of April fifteenth. And the spring yard waste drop-off will be Saturday, April twentieth, from eight AM to four PM, and Sunday, April twenty-first, from ten AM to four PM. Residents are invited to drop off residential yard waste at Barnes Composting located at sixteen thirty Camp Road in Huron. Visit www.barnsnursery.com/composting for more information. And then for community development, the Economic Development Assistance Program Guidelines have been updated for twenty twenty-four, aren't available at www.cityofsandusky.com/departments/development. A meeting with the department must be scheduled before an application can be submitted. If you're interested in pursuing assistance for your economic development program, please review the guidelines, schedule appointment by calling four one nine six two seven five eight nine one. That'll conclude my report for this evening.
Questions for the city manager, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Two, I wonder, Mr. Orzak, if you couldn't just give us, there are two items on here I want to touch on. The landing and the Sandusky Bay Pathway, we're looking for a construction inspection or qualifications for that. In just broad terms, could you outline us where we are in terms of proceeding with that project? You know, generally speaking, when we're going to go out for construction and how many parts and pieces that's likely to be? And then also, the evaluation of the combined sewer system, maybe that's something a little lateral to Mr. Klein, not sure what that is. And I'd just like to know a little bit more about what that is.
Okay, that's fine. To Commissioner President, to Mr. Murray, and the commissioners. So the landings project is starting to take final shape. We're still waiting on some permitting to get moving forward with the project. Director Klein had hoped to have that bid out in like May or June of this year. So we're still shooting for that time period. Waiting on final estimates from the consultant so that we have an engineer's estimate so that we can go out to bid. So that project is getting real close to coming to commission for permission to bid. The pathway is coming in next year, or twenty-six. I'll pass to the pathway because that's part of the Route Six project, and the pathway will be part of that project when Route Six takes place.
Yes, and so our portion of that project is from Hemminger Ditch to Cedar Point Drive. We are required to have ours completed in full and have the connection along the western side of the Sports Center roadway completed prior to them going out to bid, prior to ODOT. So we have, ours is supposed to be bid out this summer, and to have that completed by next summer for that piece of it. And the landing is intended to be completed next year as well.
Great. Sooner than anticipated, really.
Well, Mr. Whoopsir promised that it would be finished while I was still young enough to ride a bike. So I'm, that's good.
Already lost that opportunity.
And I'll pass the storm sewer thing for sure to Mr. Klein.
Okay.
Additional questions for the city manager?
He was going to answer that.
Mr. Klein?
Yes, through the Commission President, the evaluation of the combined sewer system, this is something that, it's somewhat of a precursor to the negotiations that's going to happen starting next year with the EPA about the next phase of our long-term control plan. It's also doing an evaluation of how effective the work that we've done, the thirty to forty million dollars that we've done on the first five projects, has been. Additionally, just figuring out, getting a consultant on board to do an overall analysis of inflow and filtration, other things like that. So we really want to get a grasp on this so we can have good conversations with EPA and minimize any impact that, from those discussions in the future. Really trying to get out ahead of it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
If I may, just to follow up directly to Mr. Klein, Mr. Orzak, if I may. We, of course, do receive pleas from citizens, including my son and daughter-in-law, whose basement's flood from time to time. And will this, you spoke of infill and infiltration. Well, I never get the terms quite right. But does this project look at those issues as well?
Through the Commission President, yes, this will look at those areas. We are going to do an evaluation as best we can on areas that are still flooding. We also intend soon, hopefully, to get something out over in the Superior Street neighborhood where there was some flooding last year that caused a bunch of animals to be displaced. So we're trying to get out ahead of those things now, get some of that design done. As you're aware, the Monroe Street projects, those series of projects. So we really want to, once we get those series of projects, a better understanding of what those are. It's what's the next phase, and the next phase, and the next phase, and planning those out to see exactly where the worst problems are and how we can address them as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, I think we've talked about this before, but the eventual price tag on fixing this combined sewer issue is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Hence, the phasing idea that you're pursuing and recommending makes all the sense in the world. It's kind of like the longest journey, starting with the first step. So I'm pleased that you got a plan in place to begin to attack this. We certainly don't have the borrowing capacity to go out and spend a couple hundred million dollars, nor could our residents support those kind of rate increases that that would entail. So we have to eat the elephant one bite at a time, so to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
Mr. Klein, you said the landing project would be completed in a year?
Through the Commission President, the intent is to complete it by the end of next year. So I think it'll take sixteen months, but I'm hoping to make that a little bit shorter. That's going to be all dependent on material availability.
Is that, is that, the estimate's still, what, twenty-two million?
I have not seen it come back. I've been waiting on that for a month, month and a half, for final plans and final estimate. And once I get that, I'll, you know, come for permission to bid. There are going to be a couple components that we're likely to put as alternates just to make sure that it gives us the flexibility to award the sections that are primary, that make the project critical and functional. And then there's going to be probably a couple other items that maybe we can put in as alternates.
And you may not be the person to ask this question to, do we have the twenty-two million? Do we have that funding in place? I just, I've kind of lost track of all this.
Through the Commission President, to Mr. Pajali. So that's an ongoing conversation. We're waiting on the final numbers to see where that's at. And then the second component will be the bids and where they come at. And then we'll have to figure out the debt service for that. There's a couple different sources that we're going to be able to fund that project. There's at least, I think, what, three grants already on the table that tie into this project also. So we've got quite a few different sources that'll feed into the project. But we'll make sure whatever we can do, we can afford.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Vargo.
While we were talking about, you mentioned the animals being displaced in Monroe Street, and talking about that. And I keep thinking, and people have asked me questions about the landings project, about the preservation of wildlife along their natural habitat. And I grew up over there, you know, it's really important to all of us. We seem to be chipping away at a lot of our natural habitat for our wildlife. And I know there's a lot of concern about that. So what are we doing to minimize that?
Through the Commission President, how much time do I have? We have...
I think it's important.
No, it's very important. We have been very extensively evaluating the mussels, the landings turtles. They've already relocated several mussels that they found. We have fifty-one-ish acres of wetlands on that project site. And we have designed it to impact as little as possible. And I think the communication that was presented tonight was about one point one acres of wetlands that are impacted on this site. And ways that we've done that is not only impacting it permanently, but also during construction and making sure that the contractor has to use techniques that minimize the impact to those areas. The fragmites that's out there, we have decided that it was almost an impossible endeavor to completely eliminate and eradicate, not just once, but you'd have to do it almost annually or biannually. So we are actually designing it so that you can engage with the fragmites. And we're driving piers rather than doing boardwalks, you know, that might, that might get in the water and eliminate the wave action and, you know, the shore structures and all of those various things. So as we're going through this, even the crib pier, we designed it so that there would be two sections of it, but water could still pass through the middle section of it so that there was going to be that passage way through there. The, I mean, we've, the environmental documents that we have are just a lot of them. So, and even during construction, the items that the city manager mentioned that we're going out for qualifications, we have written it so that the firm that is selected is required to have a general knowledge or have somebody that has knowledge to make sure the contractor's doing the right things.
Okay, thank you.
Items of old business, Commissioners, any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I don't know if this is old or new business, but I, and Mr. Klein, you may not have the answer to this. The Omni Fiber, Fiber Project, I noticed there's, they've left a lot of flags behind in my lawn. And they've dug up a lot of areas that I hope they're going to come back and put some sort of treatment on there to grow grass. Do you, could you give me any indication if that's going to happen, or if I can pull those flags, or?
Through the Commission President, I would urge the residents to call Omni if you have. We are working through punch list items with them on a daily basis, and we're constantly updating it as we're made aware of things from our inspectors. So I can't necessarily speak to specific locations, but I do know that they have, not the mainline contractors coming in now, but now a lot of people that are signing up for Omni Service has, they have other contractors coming in, and they're doing the private side of it. So when those things are called out, when you're doing the mainline, you have to call oops to get everything located. And then when you call for your private service as well, you've got to call oops again, and then they're going to mark everything again. So I can't answer specific properties, but...
That's fine. That's fine.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Want.
Mr. Vargel.
I know on my end of town, I believe, Ms. Vargel, I've seen the same thing, too. They dropped a box next to the fire plug. Okay, by the time I got my shoes on to get outside, tally-hoed down the road, I did stop one guy further down by the barber shop down on your end, and what's the deal? So, I drug it down about 10 feet. You know, he said he won't be able to move it. I said, "Well, don't give me a challenge. I moved it somewhere that's about 10 feet." As you'll find out in Norwalk on Saturday, right? At the Starman contest, when I get done with my cleanup, I'm pressing the air stones.
Additional items of old business, Mr. Bajali.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I think this would be old business. I always try to respond when I hear from the citizens. One of the things that I've always enjoyed about our city is, and it's a strength, is its diversity. And, when I talk to a couple citizens, this is an issue that's related to diversity. I think it's one that will primarily come from recreation or arts and culture. And, I've had an opportunity to talk to John about this, and he did a good job of, you know, letting me know, you know, maybe where that comes from, and making sure we try to get some folks serving on these other committees. But, these residents we're talking about, during the eclipse activities, there's a band called the Daz Band. And, the Daz Band, you know, I know I'm aging myself talking about this band, but the Daz Band is a really popular band in the 80s, 90s. And, for those folks who know the Daz Band, you know, they really enjoyed their music, right? They had hits on Billboard's Hot 100 charts. But, these two residents were concerned because they were like, "Wait a minute, the Daz Band's in Sandusky in April in 40-degree weather, wearing coats?" And, so, the question for them is, why now? Why would a band like the Daz Band be here in Sandusky in April in 40-degree weather? And, it's, you know, I saw some pictures, and it was really, it was difficult to even look at the pictures, and it was like, "That's the Daz Band," right? Now, I can tell when I say that, that most of the folks who are here is like, "The Daz Who?" Right? But, some people might say, "No, I remember that," right? The point is this. And, here's one of those issues, regardless of how you feel about DEI. I know how significant and important DEI initiatives are, right? This is dealing with diversity and inclusion. So, there's a perception that exists when folks see those kinds of things, and I'm really getting this from the people, but I would get it, too, if I saw that, that it, does it not matter that we try to host that event at a time where we can get as many people as possible out there who would really be out there for that particular event? And, so, I guess what I'm saying is that whatever I need to do to check on the committees that might be responsible for trying to look at those acts that we bring in, I'm willing to do it. I'm also interested in hearing anything that you all have to say about that, because, you know, when we talk about diversity, it can mean anything. It can mean, you know, what you do to serve your elderly population, what you do in terms of events for those who are physically challenged, you know, it's beyond race and ethnicity, right? So, I'm really just speaking for those residents who said, "Man, that was just disappointing to them, to see that," right? Folks were out there in coats, right? And, I think the grass was wet, so they had to change the arrangement of how the stage was set up. So, anything that you all, who are veterans on the City Commission, have to say to help chime in to address that, I'm all ears, but I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and be a part of that as well, because I'd like to see, you know, we think about those things a little more in depth. So, that's, that's one of the issues that I have. I have another one, but I think it's on new business, because we haven't really addressed this yet. So, I'll hold off on any other-
Additional items of old business, Commissioner. Any items of new business, items of new business? I have housekeeping work under new business. I need to ask for a motion for a public hearing to be set on May the 13th for a zoning map amendment at 416 Warren Street. Can I have that motion?
So moved. Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. As far as you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Resident. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
That public hearing is set. Additional items of new business. I think that this belongs under, maybe it belonged under old business, and I'll reach that, by sharing with you that I wanted to talk just briefly about the event that we had in the last four or five days. I spent about an hour at Sports Force, listening to a very gifted young man who was a graduate from Sandusky High School. His last name was Anderson. Gave a presentation on, on the eclipse. It was well-received and extremely knowledgeable, a young man that the city and our educational system could certainly be proud of. So, I spent an hour at Sports Force on Thursday, and I spent the last three days, I think, of my life on Jackson Street Pier, along with, you know, a couple thousand other people. And, it occurred to me that, you know, most of us realize that this event has been in the planning stages for, what, maybe six or seven months, maybe a year? I would submit that it's probably been in the planning stages for maybe the last 10 years. And, by that, I mean, you know, what we did this last three days didn't happen by accident. It happened because we have a very gifted staff. We have a lot of very key players in this community. Police were there, fire was there, economic development was there, engineering was there. Oh, I think everybody in all 241 people we employ in the city played a role in making this a success. And, the other piece of that puzzle was, it turned around, and there was Mary Jane Hill taking a picture of the stage that the Erie County Community Foundation was so generous to donate to us. And then, to my right was Drew Meredith, Vice President from Firelands Hospital, who very generously donated the electronic message center that we all watched as a countdown. And then, to my left was Larry Fletcher from Shores and Islands, played a big role in this making a success. And, the point that I'm making is, that didn't just happen in the last six months, those kind of relationships didn't happen in the last six months, they happened in the last 10 years. And, it, not a chance for us to bump our chest, but I think most of us can be very proud of how this turned out, and the, how we accommodated so many people, both residents and an awful lot of visitors, too. And, I can tell you that the message that was shared with me by almost every one of the people that I engaged was, "Don't take your foot off the gas." Said, "We realize where we've come in the last decade, and where we're going." And, to a person, they said, "You got it going on here. Sandusky finally has an opportunity to reach their full potential. Don't waste it. Don't take your foot off the gas. Let's keep going." And, Greater Sandusky Partnership played a big role in this. They were literally all over this pier. They're a vendor of ours. We pay them a lot of money, and they're responsible for, in part, to economic development with our economic development people, working in unison. It's really how we're successful, is collaborating with our anchor institutions, and with those people that are willing to put their money where their mouth is, so to speak. I think we've done that as a community, and I think that showed this weekend. And, you, none of us will be sitting here probably for the, for the next eclipse, but I would expect that the next one will be every bit as good as this last one was.
We'll leave you here in Fremellide. You can watch the next one.
You would say I'm already in Fremellide.
Mr. Chairman, I have an item of new business. I'd like to make a motion for an executive session regarding pending litigation.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. As far as you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
That executive session is set. Additional items of new business. Mr. Coons, you're good? Yeah. Okay. We will, we will-
End of participation.
Yes. I'm trying to find any public-
There isn't anybody here. Sorry.
Would there be any public participation out there? Apparently not.
Sorry.
We will recess to executive session, and Cody, can you have that here? We need to go upstairs.
Yeah, here.
Here?
You can shut us off?
Yeah.
Great. Let us know when we're down.
Okay, good night.
Okay, good night.